Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 11th, 2014. So I'll call the meeting to order and we will begin to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on our agenda is public announcements. Are there any public announcements? Don't forget that the Historical Museum at Fort Missoula does a great Fourth of July event if you don't have any other plans. That's a great place to go. At this time, we take public comment on items not on today's agenda. Is there any public comments? Routine administrative actions in the amount of $2,139,228.57.
I move to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have several hearings today. We tried to put the ones that would be, hopefully have less, take less time for public comment. First, so our first one is a shoreline permit variance. This is requested by John Beal for property on Lindbergh Lake. And I believe we're having him joined by phone, right? Two people, okay?
Do you need the lights dim a little or...
Dory, you want to turn down just the one above for this switch? Yeah, thanks. Who are we having join us?
Hello, this is Kristi.
Hi Kristi, this is Todd Kleatsen with the County Commissioners here for the hearing.
Hi Todd, thank you for calling.
Sure, and we're gonna get your husband out here in a moment.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so the folks joining us will be the property owners.
Hey John, are you there?
Yes.
Hey John, you're on with Todd Kleatsen, the County Commissioners, and we've got your wife on hold. We'll get her on here in a second.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, John and Christine are you on?
Yes, we are. Or I am.
I am as well.
Okay, good. All right, so we'll begin with, Todd will give us a staff report.
Okay, this is for the Beal shoreline variance at 7456 Lindbergh Lake Road, Lot 51 of Diamond L Flower Lake Shore, tract number two. The parcel is located on Lindbergh Lake, on the west side of the lake, in what's called Stonehead Bay, as close above the property. The existing dock, photograph is taken on May 16th, 2004. The existing dock is about 28 by 26 feet. It shows the long walkway extending up to the dock, 59 feet long, a foot ramp. Shows the pressure-treated wood, the coated copper, that's on the existing dock already there. The existing dock is approximately 194 feet and extends 86 feet from ordinary headwater. Another view of the dock. A view of the wooden platform going out to the boathouse. Another view of the boathouse, and as we zoom in, there's an old railroad tie and some more of the CCA, the pressure-treated wood underneath the walkway, right above there. And with it having copper and arsenate in it, it's prohibited in the shoreline protection zone. This was installed long before the shoreline regulations, but that's something that we approved today. The drawing you're looking at is the second drawing that was submitted. The first drawing, or the first dock that was submitted to us was a little bit larger than this. This was the dock that we had formally reviewed. It was a little bit smaller than the existing dock, 770 square feet. But because it extends longer than the 60-foot maximum allowed under the shoreline regulations, they require a variance. And because it's over 600 square feet total, they also require a variance for that criteria. However, on Monday, Mr. Beal sent in this application where they shortened the dock a little bit, two feet. They also shortened the ramp going from the walkway to the dock, and they also shortened that walkway to now extend about a foot and a half longer than the existing, and reducing the total square footage to 704 square feet. Still requires a variance, but it's a smaller footprint than before. The Beals are also requesting a buoy. These are the requirements for a buoy. Buoy has to be anchored no more than 75 feet from the shoreline, marked with flags and reflective material to be visible. A boat attached to a buoy can have no longer than a 15-foot rope. And a boat can swing no more than 20 feet closer to the property line. It also must be lit at night from sunrise to sunset if there's a boat parked on the buoy. We did post the variance in the independent and also on-site to the posters for that. The Lindbergh Lake Corners Association was also provided an opportunity to comment on the variance application, and no comments were received from the association from the general public. Lindbergh Lake also has its own zoning that was adopted prior to the shoreline regulations. They allow one dock per parcel with two slips per dock, and there are docks under the zoning that exceed ours by twice. A 1,200-square-foot dock is allowed under the zoning. The end of the slides. The actual recommendation that you have for us is... This is a recommendation for Commissioner Action. Note that this has been updated today to reflect the information that was submitted on Monday, given that the total area is now so at 104 square feet, which is significantly less than the 790 square feet that's existing out there already. And again, rather than being 11-foot out further than the existing dock, you're proposing it to be about a foot and a half out further than the existing dock. And on the following page, you have our recommendation for approval of construct 704-square-foot dock with the conditions as stated. And I don't know if the Beals would like to make any comments at this point.
Mr. Mrs.?
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Beal.
First, I would like to thank the County Commissioners for allowing me to appear by telephone. I'm currently in the Black Hills of South Dakota to ride. Of course, this is my 84-year-old father on a horse-riding organization that he started in 1976, and he's the oldest living riding member of the organization, so it's important to me, and I appreciate your consideration.
That's good.
Mr. Kleats has gone through our property thoroughly. My wife and I have informed him we will remove all the pressure-treated lumber and take care of all those concerns as part of this permit if it is approved. I'd also, I was not able to talk with the dock contractor about the proposal that he submitted to Mr. Kleats to address the length issue. And a slight variation, I talked to Mr. Kleats late yesterday and sent him an email. The dock contractor believes that he can safely remove part of the walkway to move the dock in. I'd asked Mr. Kleats if he could add a two-foot leeway there versus a foot and a half for a margin of air in the construction of the length, so that would make it 88 feet. And I don't mean to speak for Mr. Kleats, but I do not believe that that's objectionable to him. The other thing that I would like to request is that the dock size that Mr. Kleats originally agreed to recommend was 770 square feet versus the 704, and I'd like to request we keep that because I'd like to talk to the dock contractor for safety purposes, having a larger area of the dock pushed back towards the shore for when we have our elderly parents and grandkids there, so we have more than a four-foot walkway to enter and exit the So that would mean our variance of the dock will still be at least 41 feet smaller than the existing dock that's on the lake area. The reason for this change in the dock is, one, the existing dock is decaying and breaking up in the lake. It also has uncontained styrofoam, and we'll remove all of that from the lake and replace everything with approved materials. It will also allow us to build a safe mooring place for modern boats. Modern boats have different mooring requirements than the older boats, and they also need more water depth with the four-stroke motors to reduce the gas and oil that goes in the water versus the two-stroke that used to get on all boats. An example of this is the existing boat slip doesn't even fit our neighbor's ski boat that's 15-years-old, and that requires, we also are reconfiguring the dock for a pontoon boat. So I'd like to thank the County Commissioners and Mr. Kleats for his work on this, and I would be available to answer any questions if I could.
So Mr. Beal, just to clarify, the additional square footage you would like to have be so that you could make the ramp wider, not increase the size of the dock?
Yes, well, I need to talk to the boat, or excuse me, the dock contractor who has been out in the field since yesterday. I was not able to speak with him about the redesigned configuration. The wing portion, I would like to be able to make wider than four feet. It would not extend out to the lake, would extend shoreward, to make a more, a wider, more stable platform to enter and exit the pontoon boat. And I also wanted to talk to him about modifying one side of it as well to make it easier for people to access a canoe and a paddleboard. It would still be the smaller configuration, 41 feet less than the existing dock. And that, this was the size that Mr. Kleats originally proposed to recommend for approval to the County Commissioners.
So total square footage would be 770?
Yes, ma'am.
Todd, did you have anything you want to add to that? Of course, we haven't seen what the drawings look like, but you can kind of picture in your mind, I guess.
Yeah, I think the, what Mr. Beal's representing is this area right there. To make that area wider toward the shore, not extend the boat dock out further into the lake where it can become more of an affability issue, but make this closer toward the shore and on that side. The existing, that portion of the existing dock is roughly 10 feet wide, whereas this, as proposed on Monday, is four feet wide.
Okay. So what's the party was talking about for canoes and stuff?
Mr. Beal, could you clarify where you were talking about that you'd like to be able to put paddleboats and canoes?
On the northern end of the dock, that's the longest portion of the dock. Contractor about making a small jut out to hold the front end of a canoe, so you could actually tie the front end in it and make it more stable. I haven't had a chance to talk with him yet. This addition, again, would be much smaller than the existing dock, but I'd like a little leeway to adjust the configuration of the dock, not extending it further into the lake, but adjusting the size of it and the shape.
Okay, because currently, I believe your dock has two kind of jut-out things, so you park the boat between them, right? So you're talking...
That's correct.
All right, you want something to be able to moor the canoe to, all right. So Todd, do you think that our, and Dory, if we just condition it with, as approved by you, we would condition it to have additional, the square footage to meet the variance requirements, and the configuration have to be approved in the end?
I think what we could do is have John talk to the dock builder, and then based on the variance today, I could bring that, if the Commission is agreeable to a variance today to allow that, I could bring the...
Configuration.
Configuration back to you next Monday and have you sign off at that point in time.
Okay. All right. Further questions from the Commission?
No, I think that...
I'm good.
Mrs. Beal, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't want to take any more of your time. I feel like John has done a good job of explaining it. I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to appear by phone as well. I'm in a deposition with two out-of-state attorneys in Great Falls, and I could not move it or it would be there. I didn't want any of you to think we didn't appreciate your work because neither of us are there in person. We do.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here today that would like to comment on this request for a variance? Yes, if you could come to the microphone and state your name, please?
Hi, my name is Mike McHugh, and we have the cabin right next door to the Beals, and don't have any objection to the dock. But I am curious about the buoy. I didn't know anything about a buoy or what that is. Could you go through that again?
So Mr. Beal, Mr. McHugh has just asked that we clarify what the buoy requirements are.
So on the, I'm sorry, on the drawing, the submitted by Mr. Beal a few weeks ago, the buoy location would be consistent with the length of the proposed dock, and wouldn't be outside really the footprint of the entire dock, but located right there. The buoy requirements are here, that they can't extend further than 70 feet from the shoreline, again, that they have to be reflective and marked with a flag. Boat that is moored to the buoy cannot swing more than 15 feet, and that boat cannot come closer than 20 feet from the property line. And any boat that's moored to a buoy has to be lit at night. John, would you like to discuss why you're requesting a buoy?
Yes. You answered a few, why? The buoy will be on the point of the dock. If we could, if we had it, if the regulations allowed us to build a rectangular slip, we would have, but there's not enough space for that. So the, where the normal rectangular would be to pull in the pontoon boat, there's gonna be a buoy that's within the footprint of the dock, and that'll be the third mooring point for the pontoon boat. The boat dealer recommended that we have a four-point attachment for the pontoon boat versus a three-point, so it will not be outside the footprint of the dock.
Okay, well, thank you. It actually is an improvement for the space between our two docks, and so our family has no objection to that.
Thank you, Mr. McHugh. Someone else at their...
This is McHugh, this is Kristi.
We have one more gentleman come up. Kristi, did you have something you wanted to add, or you were just saying thank you?
I was just adding a thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate his time.
Right. Yes, sir?
County Commissioners, my name is Tom Giles. I'm a full-time resident at Lindbergh Lake and have been for many years. I've read the variance request. I've also personally inspected the dock itself, and I think all of the salient points have already been addressed to you folks. The one thing I would like to point out is I live down the lake a short ways. We have a dock, it's in a little bit better condition than the present dock that is there. But I'll tell you, when the kids are there and the grandkids are there and our friends are there, the dock is very crowded. And I really can appreciate the increase in the size of the dock and all that the Beals have done to stay within a configuration that would be acceptable to everyone in that bay. I've talked to a lot of my friends on the lake, and we are all in support of the Beals' variance application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. All right, is there anyone else who would like to comment on the request for variance? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing and the Commissioners have discussion.
I'm fine with it.
I appreciate the owner's willingness to work with Todd and work within the confines of our shoreline regulations, so I'd like to thank the Beals for that and being respectful of the neighbors and the zoning in the area. And seem like you've been easy people to work with. Are we ready for motion?
Right, so I just go, yes.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve John Beal's request for a buoy and a variance to construct, are we going with 704 or 770?
770.
770 square-foot dock on Lindbergh Lake with the recommended conditions of approval that consist of all pressure-treated wood being removed from the shoreline protection zone, the proposed dock extend no further than the existing dock. Because that's our part's still kind of applicable?
Yeah.
Give or take a...
Two feet.
Two feet. And existing railroad tie be removed from the shoreline protection zone.
And that the actual, you want to add one, I think, that the actual configuration will be approved by the Commissioners next week.
Right, I was gonna ask, add that, so I'm so moved.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good talk, everyone.
Thank you. Enjoy your ride.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. All right. Our next hearing is a petition to annex property into the Missoula Rural Fire District. The properties are located in Section 2 Township 11 North, Range 20 West. And Shira will give us the, tell us whether we meet all the requirements for none of this.
My name is Shira Scott. I'm with the Clerk and Recorder's Office. And first off, I just wanted to thank everyone who helped us conduct a successful primary election, and I'm doing payroll right now, so I'm amazed at the support we received and really appreciate it, and remind everyone that we'll need that same support in November for the general election.
Plus a little more.
Plus a little more, yes.
A few more people.
Yes. So our office received a petition to annex several parcels of land located in Missoula County into the Missoula Rural Fire District. The petition has been checked and verified, and no disappearing has been posted twice in a local periodical. It contains signatures of more than 40% of the freeholders within the proposed district. The owners signing the petition represent 40% or more of the taxable valuable, value of the property to be annexed into the Missoula Rural Fire District. And the owners signing the petition represent at least 40% of the acreage within the area to be annexed, thereby meeting the requirements in MCA. So I'll read off the legal description of the properties, and I apologize, it's lengthy. So located in Bitterroot Meadows subdivision, we have Lot 1 located at 6120 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 2 at 6130 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 3 at 6150 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 6 at 6180 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 7 at 6190 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 9 at 6210 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 14 at 6225 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 15 at 6215 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 16 at 6205 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 17 at 6195 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 18 at 6185 Delarka Drive in Lolo, Lot 24 at 6135 Delarka Drive in Lolo, and Lot 25 in 6125 Delarka Drive in Lolo. And again, those are all located in the Bitterroot Meadows subdivision in Missoula County. And also, that particular parcel of land situated in the north half of the northwest quarter, of the southwest quarter of Section 10 Township 12 North, Range 20 West, Principal Meridian, County of Missoula, State of Montana, being more particularly described as tract 1A of certificate of survey number 4548, records of Missoula County, and that's located at 7785 Alta View in Missoula.
Okay, thank you, Shira. So these are some of the things that we find sometimes that we think everybody's annexed into a fire district, which doesn't mean they didn't have protection, because we know Missoula Rural would have protected them, but they haven't been paying for that for Missoula Rural, so now they will be. So I see we have someone here from Missoula Rural. I believe your board has looked at these and approved them. If you could come forward and tell us that.
Chris Newman, Missoula Rural Fire District Fire Marshal. And yes, I recommended to our board that these petitions for annexation be accepted. The Board of Trustees accepted that recommendation and approved the annexations and asked that they be sent to the County Commissioners for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to make comment on the annexation of these properties into Missoula Rural Fire District? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move that the petition be accepted. The petition annexes a parcel of land as we've heard described. It's located in Missoula County, and they will be annexed into the Missoula Rural Fire District.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is a continuation of the discussion on the election administrator position. So we did hear comments from folks a few weeks ago, and continued the hearing to today so that it didn't, so the decision was made after the primary election. So I think I'll start with just reading the resolution that we'll be considering today, and then we'll take comments. So the resolution that is coming from staff discussion and from Vicki Zier's recommendation is to appoint an election administrator pursuant to MCA 13-1-301. And it reads, "Whereas MCA 13-1-301 provides that the county clerk and recorder of each county is an election administrator unless the governing body of the county designates another official or appoints an election administrator. And whereas there are no statutory qualifications for the position of election administrator. And whereas appointing an election administrator will professionalize the position by requiring minimum education and experience requirements for candidates for the position. And whereas appointing an election administrator will require a job description that is established, reviewed, and updated regularly based on state and federal best practices. And whereas the Missoula County Board of, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners will fund the election administrator as a full-time position that no longer divides his or her time and attention with other major government operations. And whereas appointing an election administrator removes the requirement that the election administrator run for a partisan office while ensuring the bipartisan administration of elections. And whereas appointing an election administrator removes the requirement that while running for office, the administrator ensure the integrity of an election while being physically removed from the election, he or she is in charge, is charged with overseeing. And whereas appointing an election administrator will allow Missoula County to engage in succession planning, succession planning for an increasingly technical and complex position. Now therefore be it resolved by the Missoula Board of County Commissioners that the Board of County Commissioners hereby removes the position of election administrator from the duties of Missoula County Clerk and Recorder and establishes an election administrator position that will be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. And be it further resolved that the Missoula Board of County Commissioners will review the appointed election administrator position after a three-year period to determine whether or not to continue with the appointed election administrator or to delegate the position to the clerk and recorder or another official pursuant to MCA 13-1-301." So I think that just for folks to understand what we're doing here is, we heard some concerns about people feeling that, well, what if this person didn't do a good job, wasn't accountable to the public, you know, then we're stuck with it. So this is saying we're not stuck with it. If we changed the position once, it can be changed again, and this puts into place a review process. There are another question that came up last time, or another point that was made, is that elected, there was a, there's a report from Wisconsin saying election-appointed election administrators aren't as accountable as elected. And so we asked Vicki Zier to look at the numbers in Montana related to voter turnout in the counties that have appointed folks compared to elected, or compared to ours. And so we'll just ask Vicki to give us a little, what she found there statistically.
So what I did is I took the five counties that currently have an appointed election administrator and just went to the Secretary of State website, which is out there for anyone to review, and looked at those five counties and compared them to Missoula County's voter turnout. The voter turnout overall, Big Horn County was at 47.90% turnout. The elections that I gathered the information for are the 2004 primary, the 2004 general, the 2006 primary and general, the 2008 primary and general, the 2010 primary and general, and of course, the 2012 primary and general. So as I said, Big Horn was at 47.90% turnout. Carbon County was at 59... Carbon County was at fifty-nine point three zero percent turnout. Lake County was at fifty-three point two zero percent turnout. Missoula County had a turnout of forty-six point three zero percent turnout. Sheridan County had fifty-nine point nine zero percent turnout, and Yellowstone County, fifty-two point four zero percent. This is strictly just looking at the voter turnout. There were no, no other variables taken into consideration. It was just something to review for the commissioners. They asked to, if I could find somewhere where voter turnout. I did not compare any other elections, partly because all different jurisdictions with off-election years, like the city elections, many of those are done by acclamation and are not elected. So it was, it would have been very hard to do those comparables. We do have still some sheets on the table there for anyone who wants to grab them and ask me to mention that. There's a job description that is a draft at this point, and then also the policy and process consideration form that we had available about a month ago, I guess it was. And I just want to clarify that this is an appointment. It is not a hiring. There will be a contract. The contract will expire for this employee at three years or have to be renewed, and it works with the resolution that the county commissioners are looking at adopting. And I'd be happy to answer any of the questions if you have them.
Clarify, it was an appointment. We go through kind of a hiring, what we'd normally do for a hiring process to have expectations, job description, and interviews.
When we talked about this the last time, you had made a recommendation that a board be set up that would kind of oversee this. Is that still the case, and is that something that, if it is the case, should be in this resolution as far as part of that process and how that would work? Just wondering.
Okay. Well, I'll answer part of the question, then Dory gets to answer the other part. I would strongly encourage that, that this position have an advisory board that is official. I've had what I called the election advisory board for, well, I started it clear back in 1993. It kind of disbanded after about, late 90s, and then when we started implementing all the eight HAVA requirements, I made, I created this committee, but I really think it needs to be more formalized. And I do believe that there's a need for that. And I think that they should have an, a position to come to you if they see problems or whatever. And I'll let Dory answer if it has to be in the resolution or not.
I do believe, this, Dory Brown, though, that it should be by resolution. You could put it in the present one, although I would recommend so that there's time to develop the criteria for the board and what the sort of responsibilities the board could be part of that resolution. So, I guess I would recommend waiting, but, and once you have, if you decide to do this and have an election administrator, that person could work too in putting together what the responsibilities and duties and authority of that board would be.
So then it would be an additional resolution, or this one could be revised to reflect that board?
I'd do an additional resolution. So if you need to make changes to that during, down the road, you're amending that resolution and not the one making the appointment.
So if we, if we vote in favor of this resolution and make that decision today, we could additionally add and, and in the future create an advisory board by this.
Correct.
To put it on the record.
Correct.
And at this time, we'd accept public comment. Yes, ma'am, if you could.
Can I just ask a question?
You have to come up to the mic.
If you could do it. If you've already provided testimony, can we do it again?
Oh, you're, all the testimony taken previously is considered part of this.
Thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Langen, and thank you, Commissioner Carey, Commissioner Landquist, and Madam Chair for listening to me today. I'm going to be as brief as humanly possible. I want to say also, Michelle, thank you so much for your service, your dedicated service to this community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm a precinct committeeman for the Democratic Central Committee in Missoula. I'm also chairman of the, that Central Committee's Issues Committee in Missoula. I've been a proud resident of Missoula for over forty years. I raised three kids here. I'm proud of how this community helped them grow. When I was nineteen, I just couldn't wait to move here. I served this county as a juvenile probation officer back in the 70s, and I started Friends to Youth in Missoula, which is a program that served abused and underprivileged kids for over thirty-five years here. I worked polls and ran political campaigns back in the 70s. I chaired voter registration and get out the vote drives for the Democratic Party at, in that same period, and my how things have changed since then. I just finished serving as an election judge, going through the training, working in the processing center, watching the procedures, and extrapolating, you know, those procedures in my own mind, the permutations of how these things must take place. I founded two private companies over the last twenty-five years and built them to multimillion-dollar sales. Now, one of these was a manufacturing company, where minutia, that is seconds spent on each manufacturing function, was virtually the only thing that kept us from being swallowed up by cheap Chinese imports. Good management, I found in that process, was always about the procedures. I hired the Georgia S. May Company once, the most expensive consultation organization in the country, to consult me at twenty-five hundred dollars a day. And at one point, I asked them, why are all you people, I mean, the front men, the, you know, the, all the rest of them, why are you people ex-military? And they said, well, the bottom line is, it's all about procedures, and nobody knows procedures like the military. I always found that this, that the, an organization had to stand alone on its procedures. It's always about procedures, not specific people, and it's always a bad idea to try and chase personnel with public policy. Now, I just watched Vicki Zier perform yet another outstanding job in the primary election, and I still don't quite understand, what about our elections process is so problematic that a policy change of this nature must be made? I'm not here today to talk about, you know, the specific, I'm sure you've heard a ton of that, the specific options, or, or to talk about things that infringe upon the job that you do. We put our trust in you, our commissioners, and we respect what you are doing, and we appreciate the job that you do. But the bottom line is that the citizens of Missoula and the Democratic Party can be trusted, can continue to be trusted, to do an outstanding job selecting the next clerk and recorder. I'm aware that you've looked at a few smaller, mostly smaller counties. I just wanted to point out, the research that you referred to, that we, most of us have read, involves twelve hundred elections offices in the state of Wisconsin. It was actually, that is, scientific research, peer-reviewed, journal-produced, scientific research. And the issue, of course, with looking at these, these smaller, significantly more conservative counties, is that scientific method is simply not applied. It would have been interesting to know what their voter turnout was before they went to an appointed administrator versus after, but it wouldn't have been of much scientific value. Now, Billings, Yellowstone County's been brought up, and I, I just think it's significant to point out, I mean, Billings is the Republican stronghold of this state. They changed their election office from elected to appointed under Republican commissioners. That county now sees mostly mail-in ballots, and the concept is over there that the Democrats have given up on voting. Billings today has one polling place, one. I can't imagine how that must disenfranchise the elderly and the underprivileged of that community. These commissioners in Yellowstone County were following the National Republican Marching Orders, which was get control of elections by any means. We know that that mantra exists across the country, and as Democrats, we fought them at every, at every turn. This proposal that you consider now would, would put us in a small minority of communities in the western region, I, who, who have appointed offices. I have a, a, the most recent survey across the country, forty-five hundred offices researched, and, and, you know, as thorough as can be done. It's, it's dated to 2006, but at that time, eighty-nine percent of the elections offices in the western region were elected, not appointed. The majority of offices that are appointed are in Republican hands. I don't know who suggested, it may have been one of you folks, that at, at minimum, perhaps we stand back for a moment, appoint a volunteer citizen's and professional study commission to take a look at this, you know, whether this office should be elected or appointed, and whether it should be standalone or continue to remain in the clerk and recorder's office, as to whether a, a panel of judges should be elected, as is the case in some communities. And I, again, I have the, I have the research on that, on that currently. But in conclusion, I've tried to think about, as, you know, we dealt with this in the Democratic Party, I've tried to think about, why are people so opposed to this, to this proposal? I mean, we've seen all the legislators, all of our, our elected officials, all of the candidates write letters to the editor opposing it. We see the Missoulian Editorial Board opposing it. We see all these letters to the editor opposing it. I, I, you know, we, we, we put the resolution that the Democratic Party made to a vote, and it was, there was only one vote opposed to that resolution. And so here's what, here's what I think. You know, out in the further reaches of this state, they still call this the People's Republic of Missoula. And I've always been kind of proud when people brought that up, because it's we, the people in Missoula, who make decisions here, unlike some of the cliques and power brokers across the state and in other communities. What I think is of deepest concern to folks opposed to this proposal is that across this country, we hover around an equally divided electorate. We see election after election that is forty-nine, fifty-one, fifty-fifty virtually. And the most important issue to Republicans right now is how to disenfranchise voters through manipulation of the elections process. So the issue's more important than simple administrative efficiencies or philosophies to the people who are opposed to this. I don't believe that you or anyone else intends or designed this proposal to disenfranchise voters, but it puts us one step closer to exactly that. And more importantly, because Democrats have controlled this commission for all of our recent memory, and I mean, believe me, I go back a long way, because of that, the accusation will be made to the detriment of our reputation in Missoula, to the detriment of our, of our Democratic candidates, to the detriment of their power in the legislature as they, you know, hold, you know, that largest group. The bottom line is, it's Republicans who monkey with elections, not Democrats, and that's the concept. We in Missoula have this higher standard that we need to conform to. Every decision we make here, every decision, should represent the most important principle of the Democratic Party, that the right to vote shall be unabridged and unimpeded, that no voter should ever be disenfranchised, including from the very mechanism of the elections themselves. And this burden falls on you. So we implore you, don't take the decision about how they get to vote, essentially, out of the hands of the citizens of this county. Most citizens view this as the most important government function that we, that we provide, that in Missoula, we know, and we need to say to everybody across the country, we work for the voters, no matter what. It's the voters who count. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Slide in.
Thank you. My name is Cynthia Wolken, and I also serve on the Democratic Central Committee, and I am a candidate on the ballot this November. I would echo everything Jeff has said, and would urge you to keep election duties to an elected office holder. I think this is sort of a good government issue. I think transparency and accountability are really key, and I think, even with the best of intentions, and I think you, you guys all have great intentions, I feel like transparency and accountability will decrease regardless, once these duties move to a bureaucrat. And I also have a real concern that over time, decision-making on elections is going to be driven more by budgetary concerns than access for voters and making sure that most people have the greatest chance to vote, every election, primary elections, general elections. And I, I don't think we should be supporting a policy that sets up a potential conflict between, you know, access and, and, and budget, because we all know that democracy costs money, and I don't think we should move that to a position where that might be an issue. And I, I do like all of the requirements that were drafted, except for they don't understand the carrying sixty-five pounds one, but that's okay. Must be the ballots. But I think these are all really good, and, and all really required, but I would just leave it to the voters of Missoula to decide whether our elections administrator is qualified, and I would just respectfully request you not move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a comment.
My name is Mary Gray, and I'm a Democrat here. I'm also with the Democratic Central Committee. I have a written statement by Todd Mowbray. He is the representative for House District 97. He was unable to attend, and I'd like to submit this, if you're not, let me, I would like to read it, but I can understand why you may not want that.
You can read it.
Okay. Please forgive me if I stumble. Okay. Dear Missoula County Commissioners, thank you for offering the public an opportunity to express our views on the matter of the election administrator. As before, I wish to articulate my deeply held belief that the Missoula County election administrator should remain as it has successfully for over a century, an elected position. However, this time, I'm also articulating that belief on behalf of my, of many of my constituents who have expressed to me their dismay over the possibility, however remote, that the election office would be taken from their purview as electors and become an appointed position. For me, as well as some of the options expressed to me by those constituents, that belief is founded in part upon the following considerations. One, while sympathetic to the logistic, tactical, and administrative concerns you, as the commission have expressed, my twenty-five years' experience in business leads me to the conclusion that none of your objections are precluded by having the administrator elected as opposed to appointed. My recent research finds no powers of management or delegation that would not be applicable to both methods of filling the office. Therefore, since your objectives are equally achievable, whether the election administrator is appointed or elected, there is no reason to disenfranchise the electorate in that office. If we are to embrace, number two, if we are to embrace the principles of democracy, the assertion that an appointment process will necessarily yield a more qualified officer is deeply flawed. For one thing, the theory, the theory is that structured appointment process is superior to an election, has no upper limit. To extend the theory up one level, why not, in theory, in order to ensure a better qualified county commission, have the governor institute the county commissioners instead of the electorate? Why stop there? So that we can ensure that the governors are fully qualified? Why not have the president appoint the governors? No system is a hundred percent reliable. Just as an election can occasionally produce a poor choice, so can the appointment process. A poor A poor candidate being appointed has only to deceive three, or five, as may be the case, people, whereas a poor candidate wishing to be elected in Missoula County must not only fool the press, but about 19,000 reasonably well-informed voters, a vastly more difficult task. An occasional poor choice by the electors is the price we have agreed, as a nation, to be an acceptable cost for not living under benevolent ruling classes. Number three, as a demonstrated practical matter, elected election administrators produce greater disenfranchisement, which is one of the fundamental cornerstone of our system of government. Not only has this been demonstrated in academic studies, but in practice in our very state of Montana. Our most populous county, Yellowstone, has recently moved to an appointed election administrator. One result of this arrogance is that the state's most populous city has but one, yes, only one polling place. This clearly favors the mobile, the affluent, and the highly committed to those with direct invested interest in the election over less fortunate voters. To force a city of over 100,000 to have to cast their ballots at a single polling place is scurrilous. And while this decision is made by the Yellowstone County Commissioners, since the election administrator is employed at their sufferance, who is to advocate for the county's voters? With an appointed administrator, no one. Contrast that with our experience here in Missoula with an elected elections administrator. Multiple polling places with nearly universal access, the way it should be. Elected officials, having gone through the ultimate selection process, as you yourselves have, are the jewels in the crown of democracy. Let's keep as many jewels in our crown as humanly possible. Future generations will only thank you. Let's keep Missoula County's election administrator as an elected position. Thank you for your time and consideration, Representative Todd Mowbray, House District 97. Sorry about the stumbles. It's only the second time I read through it, and the first time was pretty quick. Now, for my, if that's all right, just briefly, I'd like to address the statistics that Vicki presented to you. She herself mentioned that they were not weighted in any way, shape, or form, so they're basically kind of anecdotal evidence. They're not scientific in any way, shape, or form. You've been given scientific evidence and studies, you haven't found specific scientific evidence and studies that say that it's better to have it as an appointed position, you've only been able to find some anecdotal evidence that's unexamined. And that's not the way Democrats work. We don't just poo-poo science, and we don't embrace anecdotal evidence as the Mecca. Please, don't do that, please. It's a dissent. One of the reasons why so many people feel such passion is the visceral fear of disenfranchising. It would happen. You're taking it away from us being able to vote for somebody who's actually affecting our elections, actually making the elections possible, making our votes count when they need to be counted. We should be able to, if there is a problem with that person, have them directly responsible to the electorate, and not have another group of people, three people, to have to go through. It needs to be direct. There's a problem, let us take care of it. We're the ones that it affects the most. There's no need to have another barrier to have to go through. Find out, maybe it's going to take six years to get different people in to try and finally fix the election administrator's office. Let them be accountable to us, the people that they are affecting the most. I was pretty harsh last night at the Democratic Central Committee about the fact is, honestly, the way people are viewing this, if you vote for it, it's just going to be temporary. You will be seen as disenfranchising people. You'll have to fight that every time you have an open hearing, a public hearing. You can be viewed as that way. You may not wish that in any way, shape, or form. What you are trying to do is actually very, you know, because Vicki has done an incredible job as an election administrator, and she's built a system that's actually nationally recognized and excellence, you're trying to preserve that, but you're trying to fix something that's not broken. And in doing so, the view that people are seeing, what people are seeing you do is disenfranchising people. They're not looking at the fact that you're just trying to preserve something. It's working now, it's not broken. Leave it alone. They will not view this in any positive manner. And it will be temporary. We'll have it back into the elections as an elected position pretty soon, if you do this. I can almost guarantee it. Matter of fact, I'm willing to take that bet, if anybody's willing to bet me. Please be careful at what you do. Appearance does mean stuff. It's incredibly important. Please be very, very careful, and make certain that your decision is based on facts that have been examined, and not just facts that you want to get to support your position. Thank you so much.
Thank you. First, a public comment.
I'm Jerry O'Connell from Greeno, and actually, I don't have much to say, because everything they said covered the ground. So I will thank them for their wisdom, and just simply add, if this was put in place, and it was a nominated position rather than elected, I'm not concerned with the way you three commissioners would handle it. I'm comfortable with you folks as individuals and politicians and decision-makers. But things can change, and can change much quicker than anybody ever envisions. Change is going on all around in Missoula County. Just ask Eric Cantor. He, all of a sudden...
Has he moved to Missoula?
No, but I mean, that's an indicator of what can happen in elections. And the pressure of that far-right to change things and to slip into positions of power where they weren't expected creeps me out a little bit, frankly. And the thought of, should that happen in our county with this rule in place, what kind of dastardly acts could take place? And I don't want to see us in that position to have to worry about that. So I would strongly hope that we can keep this as an elected position, and I'm all for that concept of the People's Republic of Missoula. I love it, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you.
You don't have to go that far to find out about elections and what can happen, Jerry.
Just saying.
I understand. I would have mentioned that, but I'm thinking that.
Thank you, Jerry.
And it happened with the Democratic Party.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Lauren Meyer. I am a Republican. I'm the Vice President of Missoula County Republican Women, but today, I'm not speaking as a Republican, I'm just speaking as a concerned citizen. And I can say that I've been to hundreds and hundreds of Republican meetings of all different stripes and flavors, and I can tell you, voter disenfranchisement is not on the agenda, in fact. So I just wanted to clear up that misconception. It's not something we're worried about, in fact, the opposite. I also want to point out that appointed elections administrator positions are becoming more frequent across the country now. It's a trend that's increasing, including in such Republican strongholds as Seattle. Oh, wait, that's a Democratic stronghold. And in fact, the whole state of Washington has appointed elections administrator offices as well, and I hope we all recognize that they're probably not under the control of Republicans. So in conclusion, I want to put forth my support again in favor of this resolution of supporting the professionalization of the position of elections administrator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today. I will join the chorus of saying that I think that our system that works as it is right now is an excellent system, and we are very fortunate, as somebody who has had the opportunity to interact with many election administrators and county clerks across the state, to have the very best one here in our backyard. Vicki and her staff, I want to make sure to include them, because it is a team effort, and they have done an incredible job, have done a really wonderful job at putting together our elections and making sure that everybody is accountable, or that they remain accountable to people. And to me, that's the largest issue here, is accountability. I think that we're fortunate here in Missoula, because nine times out of 10, the things that the people want are the things that Vicki has in mind, and there's a couple of things that she's brought up here and there that we've gone back and forth on, and she's been incredibly responsive to the issues that people brought up. When we were talking about polling consolidation, a few people raised a few polling locations and said, we'd like to keep these ones, and we did, and we found a compromise. And I think that that's a great showing of what accountability of the people is all about. And I think that having this position be elected has resulted in a strong responsiveness between the people and our elected election administrator. And I do think it's really important that we think about this decision, not in light of the people who are in your positions now, but in light of who will be there in the future. I mean, we don't know who is going to be sitting at these three positions in the future. We don't know who will be our election administrator 20 years into the future, because I have a lot of faith in the people who are here right now, but I don't know anything about what the future holds. We won't always have the people here that we trust. So I'm not here to point fingers at one party or another, but there is a movement nationwide to lead towards more voter suppression efforts. I mean, there are people who want to take away opportunities to register to vote, they want to take away different dates when people can register, they want to require new IDs or limit the IDs you can use. I mean, that's simply a reality. I mean, we saw those bills in the legislature in this fall, we're going to be voting on a ballot initiative to eliminate same-day voter registration. That's where we are. And in a world that exists where these attempts are being made, I think that we need an election administrator that is accountable to the people, so that if anything like that were to ever cross their mind, the people would be able to answer and be able to push back against that. Because we might end up with a commission that agreed with that. And I am fearful of a situation where we wouldn't have that recourse, where only a commission would be the people in charge. You know, I think it's important to say that making this an appointed position doesn't really remove the partisanship, because they're still being appointed by a partisanshipally-elected commission. And certainly, they won't have to stand for election, but being appointed by political people is certainly the same sort of thing in my mind. And I think it's also important to say that all jobs are going to have a learning curve. I know that was a strong argument for maintaining this as an appointed position, so that we could try to keep some of that institutional knowledge, and I understand the desire to do that, because that makes sense in some senses. But right now, we have a brand-new sheriff that's coming in, we have a brand-new county attorney, people that have never had these positions before, and they're very important positions, and they're going to have to learn. They're going to have to take on that job, and I think that our county election administrator, our county clerk and recorder, is going to have to be able to do that as well, and I think they will. I mean, there's going to be some hiccups, but they're going to learn from their predecessors, and they're going to have an opportunity to step up and have new and creative ideas about how to make our elections more accountable. And the advisory committee that you all mentioned, I think is perhaps a step in the right direction, but it's not accountability. I mean, I serve currently on the election advisory committee and the same-day voter registration committee that Vicki has been so good to put together, and it's been incredibly helpful to be able to offer advice and feedback to that whole group as we try to come back with these things. But at the end of the day, I don't get to have a vote, I don't get to make a decision. I mean, the person who's our election administrator gets to make those final decisions, and that's the reality of what it will be if we allow for this advisory committee. I mean, certainly, they can say, hey, hold on, we don't really like the direction you're going, but at the end of the day, it's not their decision to make. So I think that if we're looking to the future, I think it's not so much just the bit about accountability, because I've heard from the people who were here last time, and they said, somebody who's appointed versus elected is just as accountable to the people as anybody else, and that's just not the case. I mean, it all comes down to who you're accountable to. And it's my preference, and I think it's the preference of the people in this community, to have somebody who's not accountable to a county commission, or just accountable to 10 or so members on advisory committee. They want somebody who's accountable to all the voters, and I think that's what we should come to expect. So what I'd like to leave with is a compromise that I would like to bring to you as a possible opportunity to come forward or to move forward with. I recently, in my other capacity as a state legislator, offered a bill draft to create a position of an elected election administrator position, a new position that counties could create if they're so inclined. And I would like to work with you to advance that through the legislature and see it passed, so that we can accomplish the goals that you would like to see of a new position that is outside of politics, that is a person who would be able to take on that burden and not be encumbered by all the other duties of a clerk and recorder, but also accomplish the things that so many of us here in the audience care about of being elected. I'm open to the idea of that person being a nonpartisan elected office to try to eliminate some of that issue, but I think that that's a better way forward. Keep that person elected, but maybe make it a separate position so that we can have our cake and eat it too, in many ways. So that's all I've got. Thank you for the opportunity, and I hope that you will consider not moving forward with this proposal, but considering a different one. Thank you.
So Representative Bennett, how do you propose that that addresses the one problem we've talked about, is that every four years, that person is still on the ballot, has to maintain hands-off of the election process that we are saying that we want to be accountable for?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, that is going to continue to be a problem for all elected officials. I mean, if we want to keep this position elected and accountable to the people, they're going to have to run for election. That's just part and parcel of how that works. That's an issue that I think we've been able to survive with pretty well into the last few years. I mean, Vicki has come up with some very creative strategies to make sure that everything runs well and that everybody is able to vote up until Election Day and get registered and do everything they need to do, despite the fact that she's been on the ballot a number of times and even contested in some elections. So that is unfortunately something that we're just not going to be able to deal with, but I think that that is the important piece of keeping that accountability that is the most important.
You said you'd work with us on maybe creating a compromise and maybe having something worked out into law, so it's an elected election administrator, a nonpartisan. I don't see nonpartisan working on something as simple as our Missoula City Council. How do you expect something like that to work on something like a local elections administrator? How do you really ensure that somebody's really nonpartisan when they run for office?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Landquist, I'm so used to legislative functions, so I'm always going to go through the chair. I hope that's all right with you. But Commissioner Landquist, I can't control what is in people's hearts. I mean, there is no person out there, especially somebody who's thinking about getting involved and helping with elections and being an election administrator, that hasn't thought about their views on different issues. I mean, you're never going to have somebody who is totally nonpartisan. Obviously, our, you know, members of our city council have their own political leanings, both left and right, but they run as nonpartisan offices. And I think that the nonpartisan piece is just an option, and I want to throw it out there, because I think that that is an intriguing piece for some people that I've talked to about moving this forward. But I think that the nonpartisan piece is helpful, because it kind of pulls it out of the party apparatus. It's not somebody that gets elected or nominated by one party or another, it's people who are running under no banner, simply for, essentially like judges. It's people who are running under no banner, simply for, you know, essentially like judges, people who are running to say, you know, "Here's my qualifications. Here's my background. This is what I think I can provide. I'm not running because I'm one party or another."
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's the comment?
Thank you. Von Dean Kapetsky. I speak in favor of this proposal, and I'd like to tell you why. There is a reason that many states are going to an elected administrator position. There is a reason that this is becoming best practices throughout the nation. The primary reason is because the election administrator position is becoming an increasingly technical and complex position. I did some research before I came in today. The state of Washington, it has over 50 classes available for election administrators so that they can learn to do that job better. It is a job that is becoming so technical that I don't see how you can not vote for this. I don't see how it can be one part of another job because in and of itself, it's a full-time position. And that, that reason more than any other, I think, warrants making this a hired position. One of the other speakers pointed out that in Yellowstone County, there is only one polling place. The reason there's only one polling place in Yellowstone County is because we've gone to absentee ballots. And I think Vicki pointed out at this last hearing that when she first started sending out absentee ballots, I believe she sent, she said she sent out 500 and something. This last election, more than 25,000 people requested absentee ballots. So it is not fair or right to say that people would be disenfranchised because all people have to do is request an absentee ballot, and that's the way they're going. The reason polling places are declining is because more people are voting by absentee ballot. You know that. It is also not a partisan issue. The state of Washington is primarily a blue state. We all know that. Yet they've gone to election administrators, as has the state of Texas, which is primarily a red state. It is because election administrators are best practices throughout the nation in support of an increasingly technical and complex position. And for those reasons, I ask you to vote in favor of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kapetsky.
Good afternoon. My name's Tyler Gernant. Before I begin, I really do want to take some time to thank all of you for your service to Missoula County, and especially Vicki, for the service, your past and future service to Missoula County. I have tremendous respect for all of you, but I disagree with you on this issue. And I previously have spoken against the proposal, and I don't really want to rehash all of those same points. But I do think it's tremendously important to understand the implications of the decision that is about to be made. And I don't mean to suggest that the world will fall or that you're going to appoint some kind of boss tweet as the election administrator. But that being said, I don't believe there are a whole lot of positives associated with this proposal, and I think there are a lot of negatives. First of all, you're creating a position that is insulated from the voters of Missoula County. I have heard a number of times that the only current requirement for clerk and recorder is that you be an elector of Missoula County, essentially that you're 18 and registered to vote in Missoula County. Vicki has said this. Frankly, Vicki, I have more respect for you than that. I think your qualifications far surpass the fact that you, I don't know if you're over 18. You must be if you're elected, but you don't look a day over 17. But voters impose their own standards, and I think that's important to remember. And while I respect the fact that as county commissioners, you will be imposing greater qualifications for this particular position, you're essentially substituting yourself for the voters of Missoula County. Secondly, you're talking about making this position and granting it a contract. As you have stated, it is an at-will, it's an appointment, it's an at-will appointment, which means you can fire them for any reason or no reason whatsoever. Granting them a contract simply means that if you terminate them, you are now liable under the contract for damages. So you're creating a liability where there would otherwise be no liability. And as an attorney who handles these types of cases and takes an inordinate amount of wrongful discharge calls, I can assure you that if you were to fire somebody, they would be contacting many, many lawyers in town. And it's not something that's necessary. So again, a huge potential cost to the county. Third, and I don't know how important this is, this was suggested at the last meeting in terms of succession planning, the issue of a clerk and recorder is up for election every four years, and in the event that the clerk and recorder were to lose an election, they could somehow sabotage things on their way out. That's true for any elective office, and frankly, it's true for county commissioners who would now be appointing an at-will election administrator and would have the ability to fire that person at any point in time for no reason. Beyond that, their Montana law specifically requires that any outgoing elected officer in this capacity is required to perform their duties to completion before they leave, and in the event that they do not perform those duties to completion, then their successor has a cause of action against them. So there is some provisions in the law that would account for that. But frankly, you know, finally and most importantly, I think, is the amount of public comments that has been heard on this issue. This is the second meeting that you've had, the second hearing. The vast majority of comments that I have heard at the last meeting and at this one were in opposition to this proposal. Missoula-area legislators have signed a letter opposing this proposal. The Missoulian has written an editorial opposing this proposal. Frankly, if you're not willing to listen to the voters of Missoula County on this proposal, what assurances can you give the voters of Missoula County that you will listen to them regarding elections in the future? And furthermore, what kind of environment are you creating for this newly-appointed position? The newly-appointed election administrator is going to come into a situation where every action, inaction, and misstep is going to be scrutinized under a microscope. That's a very difficult position to enter into. And frankly, ultimately, it will, those criticisms will come back to you. And I know you receive a healthy amount of criticism already. This will be in addition to that amount of criticism. So frankly, for our sake as Missoula voters and for your own sake, I would strongly urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Any other comment? Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Pam Walzer. I spoke last time, and I thank you very much. I always forget to thank. So thank you for what you do, and especially Vicki. You have built an amazing elections department with some very great staff. So I'm not going to reiterate all things I said last time, but one of the things I believe I understand, that with this position, there is no plan for an increase in staff. There's going to be essentially neutral as far as staffing is concerned. So one would, in a scenario that one might assume, that there could be very qualified staff, one of the deputies within the elections department that meets these requirements. In fact, all future deputies might be required to have these kinds of professional requirements that would, for their employment. So when you're talking about professionalism, that can be accomplished within staff, that staff could be required to have the experience, have the education, have the expertise to meet all of these needs. This also solves some of the problems about carryover from one election to another should the elections official lose their election or move on. I wanted to talk about the chart where there were the five counties that had appointed election officials versus Missoula County. And honestly, I pulled up the general election turnout from 2019, from 1992, 1992 to 2012. And Missoula is in the proud position of being 49th out of 56 counties in voter turnout, which, that's very sarcastic. We are one of the worst. And so looking at all of the counties, not just those five, it's all across the board. So just because someone's in an appointed position does not mean that they're having a better turnout. So within Missoula, within Montana, it's not scientific, this is just the voter turnout, it doesn't seem to make any difference. Now, there's turnout versus voter disenfranchisement, which is more than just turnout is, getting registered, staying on the rolls, lots of different things, lots of different reasons. And I would think it's a good idea, somebody suggested that there could be a study of some sort within Missoula County, trying to figure out what is the best for Missoula or within Montana. So with that comparison, it really doesn't seem to me to make much difference in whether or not there's going to be, Monti, Missoula's not going to be any worse off voter turnout with a, at this precise moment, with an appointed versus an elected. What is important, though, is down the road, as was mentioned, budget. It's expensive to run elections away. Vicki's been running elections. And there's an expense that I can think of that is, would be, could be easily cut with this move, is school elections and city elections are by mail, and the citizenry has, we've asked you to have drop locations. That's expensive. I've sat there at Lowell School and gotten paid to sit there and collect ballots. But there are hundreds of ballots that may not have made it to the elections office in time were it not for those drop locations. That's just the way Missoula is. It's just, and even on Election Day, people dropping off ballots when they had lots of opportunity to mail them. We do lots, we do a lot in Missoula to make sure that every person can vote, gets a chance to vote. Vicki has expanded hours for elections. And with an appointed administrator, the dollar figure starts to get much more important. And I'm very concerned about, by having an appointed, over time, the cost of the election is going to become very, a big pressure. And rather than lately, the budget is going up and up and up, with all these extra things to try and get better voter turnout, to move us from being 46, 49 out of 56, move us up a few notches in voter turnout would be really nice. Anyway, so all that you've mentioned of what you think would be really, the advantages for this, I think can still be accomplished within the current system. Current system doesn't seem to be, I don't think it's broken. Having an elections advisory in a more formalized basis is a good idea. Whether or not it could be an official board that people can be appointed to and serve and have rules and responsibilities. But again, just like the planning board, you don't have to listen to them. That's what, that's what boards do. But it's not a bad idea, but still could be done within this, the existing system. There is a staff that provides continual professionalism, and there's no reason why staff hires cannot be required to meet some of these professional requirements. We've talked, you've talked about the competing priorities between the treasurer's office and the clerk and recorders and election administrators, how they all happen at the same time, and which makes stress on the department. There is an option, I don't know exactly what the legal requirements, methods are, to reverse the combination of those two offices. You look across the state, every county seems to have a different combination of offices. Rivaldo County has their treasurer separate from the clerk and recorder. Some, some counties have clerk and recorder and superintendent schools together. There is a wide assortment. Missoula County combined those two offices, as well as combined a sheriff and coroner. We don't have an elected public administrator. That's, I did reluctance. That is one option that can be taken. And the offices were combined, it's the county commission's, I believe, responsibilities to combine and/or separate offices. So that is another alternative, just as Bryce suggested, possibly, if the legislation passed, having a separate office of elections administrator. So along with...
Question for you. So I guess I'm having trouble connecting the dots as to why an appointed person would not, somehow their budget would, like, be less than needed when we have an appointed depart, we have a lot of appointed department heads. Our public works director is appointed. Our, our planning director is appointed. Our IS person is, you know, the, we don't, we don't somehow say elected people get to have more money than appointed people in Missoula County. Missoula County has never not funded a request for things regarding to elections.
Okay. Well, I'm, that is the perceived, the perception. And that's...
Maybe come to the budget hearings, which we have one in about five minutes.
So that, that is a general perception that the elected official will advocate stronger, more strongly for a, for their staffing than someone that is, reports directly or indirectly to you.
I can tell you that in Missoula County, that is not true. So, and the other one is, you talk about having professional staff that would somehow be able to carry the ball, but they're not accountable to the voters. So what does that, how is that different than what we're proposing?
The difference is, is their, their boss, the elections, the clerk and recorder, is the one who elections are tied to. If elections don't work, they talk to, they, the clerk and recorder is not, is held responsible for that and will lose a reelection, may lose a reelection. When it comes to the county commission, elections is a lower priority of all the different reasons why you might be elected or not reelected. Lots, very often land use issues are what, or taxation is what drives your reelection or election, not elections. It becomes...
That's certainly what we hear on the campaign trail. Okay. So thanks, those, thanks for answering those questions.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Do want to add for the record that the only email I received today was from Gloria and Doug Rourke reaffirming their stand that they're not in favor of this, but they do favor a board overseeing made of equal Republicans and Democrats and stuff. And we can make a printout of their letter again for the hearing.
Okay. Does the, does the commission feel like we've had enough public comment to close the hearing?
I do, I do.
And I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there comments from the commissioners?
Do you have anything?
Well, I'd just like to thank the folks that have turned out today to speak to this. This does go to the heart of our democracy in a very real way. What we're about is trying to improve public administration, basically, when we talk about this issue. What's the best way to run this in the sense of accountability, efficiency, needed expertise? Whoever said that this job of supervising elections has gotten much more complicated in the past few decades, at least, is certainly true. It's not something, in my view, that you can just walk off the street after winning an election and do well. Vicki, in my mind, has done an excellent job, not because she's a Democrat, but because she's Vicki, and she cares deeply about public service, and she has the knowledge and expertise to back all that up. If we're not careful, we could, we could do something which would imperil the integrity of our voting process if we don't get the right person for this particular job. I think doing it for three years is a wise decision. See if it works. Give it a try. If it's not, we'll change it. Terms of accountability, in my view, the commissioners will hear about a significant problem in the elections office long before the voters will. And it would be incumbent upon us, and often is, is to take action to address this, whatever situation we're looking at. So I think we give it three years. If it demonstrates that it's not working, and we're all going to be paying close attention to it, we'll come back and we'll see what else we can do. But I want to take partisanship as far away from elections as I can. I want people who are knowledgeable and experienced and, and good public administrators. And I think we'll best get that if we follow this, this current proposal that we're looking at. I think it's a little curious that Vicki justifiably has earned kudos around the state of Montana for her work, but we apparently are not willing to accept a recommendation on how to, how to best succeed her. So, I mean, that's just a judgment call, but, but I'm in favor of trying this for three years to see what happens. And believe me, I care about the democratic process.
I've always tried to explain my rationale when it comes down to why I'm going to vote a certain way on something, especially... a certain way on something especially a really intense, tough topic. If I had been, I had been planning on going on to the general election, so I was really planning on not taking a stand either way on this because I didn't want it to be perceived on my part as having any sort of conflict of interest as to what I did with an elected position. But since it's clear that I won't be going on to an election in November, I've had to reevaluate and make sure that I was prepared to take a stand on this. I think that there's one, two, three, five things that I bulleted in this resolution that I think are really important to note, and I also think it's important to note, I don't want anything being misconstrued as far as this three-year period. We are appointing the, or, or if we go forward with this, creating the position, and this resolution gives us the ability to look at the position in three years. As far as if we go forward with this and, and appoint somebody or hire somebody to fill that position, that position doesn't necessarily get a guarantee of three years in a contract. That would follow best practices, hiring standards with, with a period of, a grace period, probationary period, et cetera. And so I want to make it clear that, that the creation of the position and the person filling that position are two different things that we're looking at here. And I've heard things like, if it's not broke, don't fix it, that's just it, we don't want it broke. It is a question of making sure and guarantee that there's good public administration. And we don't know what the future holds, which is all the more reason to make sure that we don't allow for anything to get broken in something as important as an election administration position.